The Anacortes City Council Meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Mr. Franciac, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, just a couple of quick announcements. I know a couple of council members were able to attend the Downtown Alliance. I think it was an annual celebration, and I'm sorry I was not able to make it over there. But I know the city is looking forward to continuing to partner with the Anacortes Downtown Alliances. We work on the Main Street Community Designation. Also, a quick update, our Avenue, I know it's still challenging getting around that detour. We still are on time. I know people read into the fifty, fifty-day contract, but it's fifty working days, and it does allow allowances for weather and those kind of weather and holidays and weekends. But we still expect to be substantially complete February, end of February, and that's everything paved. But of course, weather permitting, and again, speaking of weather, I know it was a very cold weekend, and the fire department responded to quite a number of broken water lines. And I'd just like to encourage folks to make sure to, next time we have the big cold snap, try to cover it up where you know, know where your water shut-off valves are, because the fire department might have other priorities to go out there if nobody's life is in danger and it's just water. So again, they probably responded to almost thirty water, water, water pipe breaks in people's residences. And we had, I think, three individuals take advantage of our cold-weather shelter vouchers over the weekend as well. So that, oh, and the weather's not over. It's still winter. There is a winter weather advisory for tonight, so please pay attention. I think there's certainly a possibility with the ground still very frozen, even if it starts out as rain, it could be very slippery with some ice, and a little bit of mixed precipitation expected tonight. Okay, enough for me, and first up, Finance Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met Thursday at, oh, whoops, I'm sorry, I can't remember. It was January eleventh that we met, and it was Councilmember Cleveland McGrath, myself, and Finance Director Steve Hoagland, and we, and Ms. Shu was there as well, because we talked about the inter-fund loan that is on tonight's agenda, and that has been planned. It's consistent with our financing plan, and it's to help pay off our four-point-five-million-dollar line of credit with Savvy Bank that's due just January thirty-first. So this is a bridge loan from our Water Fund and our Equipment Replacement and Reserve Fund, and we'll hear more about that during the, when we, when we address it in the agenda. But it looks good. It's part of the plan, and yeah, moving forward. We also talked about the two thousand and twenty-three audit results from the state. There are no significant issues. And we did a review of the LTAC funding and the unrestricted funds that are unencumbered. And we had a spreadsheet of those amounts, and then I have some really messy notes here. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Cleveland McGrath what I may have left out.
It's Cleveland McGrath.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Moulton covered most of it. The only, the only thing that I think the Finance Committee is, as the new, two of the three members that are, are new on it, is the fact that we've got the cap, uh, capital set aside for some kind of a project, and then we also have the unencumbered cash when it, with regards to the LTAC funds. And so our request is that we more formally designate that twenty-five percent of each year's funds that are gathered from LTAC to be kind of earmarked for some capital project. Right now, it's, it's, the Finance Department just keep being a running total and has the numbers, but it'd be, we'd like to kind of have that formalized a bit more. And that's it.
Sounds like some tasking for the new LTAC Chair, Mr. Walters. All right, next is the three-B Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee. Any report that we have, Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Sure. We had a HACS meeting on January tenth, and we really just prepared a little bit more about our presentation that we're going to receive tomorrow from the county and the Volunteers of America Organization, which is going to be taking over coordinated entry for the county beginning, I believe, February first. So we, we provided, we kind of finalized and provided to the county and VOA the questions that we had about the technical components and whatnot. So that's now, they've had a week to work on it. We're going to have a presentation to our committee tomorrow, and then I believe they're going to be presenting to a number of the involved organizations later, later in the day. We talked a little bit about the fact that with the cold weather that had been coming on and coordination with the county about what warming centers we have in the community, and if those warming centers are aware that they are being publicized as warming centers. So the library was noted, the, and the senior center was noted, but we need to make sure that we're all in coordination and that those, those spaces and those, the employees there understand that that's being advertised. We talked a little bit about Salvation Army. They have spent the twenty thousand dollars that they have for tenant-based intervention, and they're looking for, because it's been used if there's other opportunities. So we discussed that a little bit, but they still do have money left in the Cold-Weather Shelter Fund. So that's, there's still plenty of money there as of now. We got a bit of an update from Eric Johnson. We unfortunately lost the Gentry House, which was an adult kind of daycare facility near Coslin Park, and because there was water damage and it had to be demoed. And so there is a desire to, and, and energy behind with Eric as the lead and his church to move towards rebuilding that. So I think that'll be a really important component that we're lacking right now in the community for adult, for adult daycare for, for folks that need it. And then what other things we talk about? We talked a little bit about the fact that the point-in-time count is coming up at the end of this month, and that, uh, Community Action is actually, has a new program, I believe it's new, and it's supportive, it's a supportive employment program, and they would love to have anyone who would be, would use those, that opportunity. It's how to get a job and how to keep a job. So we hear a little bit about Community Action. They're continuing to do really good work in Anacortes. So I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
The Public Works Committee met at five PM today. It was Councilmember Walters, myself, and a whole lot of Public Works staff. And we talked about two vehicles that are coming up for replacement. One is a fire truck, and we ordered it forty-six months, it takes forty-six months to build. So we ordered that. It'll be a replacement for two thousand and twenty-eight. It will cost one-point-one million dollars, which we have the cash on hand for because we have our Equipment Replacement and Reserve Funds. Also, we'll see a replace, that comes to council next week. We also will see the replace, a replacement for the Parks Truck. It's an electric F-150 at a mere fifty-five thousand dollars, and we will surplus both the fire truck and the old Parks Truck. We had a Stormwater Division update from Manager Diane Hannenberg, which was mainly a staffing update. Aaron Esther Holt has been in the department, working half in planning and half in Public Works, and now he's full-time in Public Works, which doesn't change any of the wage, his wages or anything, but he will be in charge of the plans and the permitting and the, and the maintenance of the stormwater system. He'll run the source control program and also the erosion control inspections on construction sites, which is super important, and he has lots of experience in that arena. Tonight on the agenda, we have a contract for two thousand and twenty-four janitorial services, and that's for seventy-two thousand dollars, and that includes some as-needed work. So that's for the library, the fire department, City Hall, the Ops Building, et cetera. So it's quite, it's, it's quite a contract, and it's a lot of work, so we're glad to have that coming forward. Then we talked about our general sewer plan. Again, Public Works is all about planning this year, which is great. So we've contracted with HDR for a scope of services, and that's about four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. The last, the last sewer plan we had done was in two thousand and fifteen, and this one is going to be far more data-driven and will help inform the Capital Facilities Plan element of our comp plan. It'll be way more robust than what we've had in the past, so data collection and analysis. And that will help inform where we need to focus our repairs on our system. So we're going to get a whole bunch of data for that, and that will help us size our pipes correctly, et cetera, et cetera. All these things that I actually find fascinating. And lastly, we talked about the twelfth and Commercial Intersection roundabout and the grant funding we received for that. And there is going to be a contract modification with the consultant Alta Planning coming to us next week. It's for three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and that will bring us to sixty percent design for the project, which means then we can have WashDOT approve it and move forward from there. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. Next up is three-D Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I figured eventually tonight I would have to give a committee report, so I'll call it this one. Christine Cleveland McGrath and I attended the Port City Liaison Committee meeting that was last week. We got a number of updates from the port, and we provided a number of updates from city staff as well. I, I think we had a good interaction between city staff and port staff, especially with respect to what we need from them on stormwater sewer issues, those kinds of things as they pursue new capital projects. We didn't have any port commissioners present at the meeting. Commissioner Petrus was stuck on Guimas and Commissioner, one other commissioner appointed to the committee who wasn't there, and this was our first committee meeting. Otherwise, I don't think there's anything particularly of substance to report because it was, it is really a liaison meeting where we just discuss the other things that the city and port are doing.
Thank you. Next is Personnel Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Yeah, the Personnel Committee met on Friday, January ninth. It was myself, Councilmember Cleveland McGrath, Ms. Shu, and Mr. Hoagland from the Finance Department. We discussed the recruiting that's in place right now, everything from recruiting for the HR Director to a new Finance Manager, Rec Coordinator. We also discussed the Eden Replacement. As you'll remember, we're contracting with Soft Resources, and they rolled out a preliminary schedule for us that's going to start on March first with the release of requests for proposals, and then take us all the way through to hopefully contract negotiations in August, September of two thousand and twenty-four. We also discussed some of the departmental restructuring that's happening in the Public Works Department with the addition of a Supervisor Two at the wastewater treatment plant. Also, we have an internal posting for an accountant position in our Finance Department. And then we also discussed NeoGov online recruiting, which is a software that is designed to hopefully lead us to new candidates and also help with the hiring process. And then finally, we discussed Declusion Equity, DEI training. It's going to be done by Allen and Unger. It's going to be two, three-hour training sessions for all management employees.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements and committee reports that we may have missed? All right, good reports, good work by the committees. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, which is Public Comment. It's an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda and related to city business. And I have one member of the public signed up, so you always get to go first when you sign up, Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan, and the topic is Public Notice in Last Week's Anacortes American. We don't start the timer until you get the microphone up, so. But I think you know the drill. Just state your name and the city you live in, please.
Okay. Am I on?
Yeah, you are. Maybe a little bit closer.
So I'm Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan, and I live here in Anacortes. And I just want to comment on, there was a four or five pa, or four or five column public notice in the Anacortes American last week, and honestly, I read it probably that many times, four or five times, and it was hard for me to understand it. So I will just say upfront that maybe I'm misunderstanding some of it, but I do want to comment on it. So it was two parts, and one was about outfall relocation for the wastewater treatment plant. And then the second part was, and I'm going to just quote it, "To design a federally permitted repair of the revetment, which parallels the Guimas Channel shoreline and protects the Guimas Channel Trail." And then I'm going to go on and read some more from it just to stress the complexity of what it was talking about. "It included a survey of the existing trail, hydraulic analysis, and geotechnical evaluation of the project area, design packages, completion of a bid package for construction, coordination of project meetings, construction inspections, engineering support, prep of change orders when needed, and also progress reports." So it goes on to say, "Included in the project elements are revetment repair, restoration of the trail surface, limiting construction impacts for users and residences, recovery of damaged revetment rock, and removal of impacted sediments." So one of the things that struck me as I read it is that that's just a huge ask for somebody. I don't know who would even participate. I will say, this was a public notice for an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications. So the other thing that struck me as far as it being a, a big ask is that it goes over five years, and I think that's really, well, I'm surprised at that because we all know that every year that trail gets damaged, and so one expects the storm's intensity and frequencies to increase. So I'm wondering how anybody can predict the damage in the next five years. The city was warned about some of the problems with the trail even before construction started so many years ago, and I feel like that information was ignored, and we're paying the price now. I don't understand why FEMA dollars are being used to support this whole process because nobody's property or home was damaged, nobody's livelihood was put at risk. It's not, it doesn't seem like an emergency to me. It just seems like FEMA dollars should be spent elsewhere. There are so many parts of this country that are being influenced by climate change. So I don't know what this, I don't know what the cost of this consultant is going to be, and I also don't know what the cost of the whole plan. I don't, it's kind of a mystery to me. But so those are just some of the thoughts I had, and I just am sharing them, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any members here in council chambers wish to address the council? And online? Okay, thank you, and we will move on to item number five, which is our Consent Agenda, items A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I move approval of Consent Agenda, items A through E.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Consent Agenda, items A through E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are on to item six-A, Other Business. First item up is Resolution thirty-one forty-five. This is waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase and/or replacement of Motorola Solutions, Inc., portable and car radio systems for the Anacortes Police Department. Discussion item and possible action. And Chief Floyd is working his way up to the podium to tell us about this one, besides what is in the packet. Chief Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, members of the audience in attendance. So this resolution, I worked with our Contracts Division for the single-source request. This is to match existing radio equipment that we currently are using in the Anacortes Police Department to outfit our five new levely lift positions. This will be vehicle radios and portable radios that are currently the same models that we're using, so it's compatible with the existing equipment that we already have.
Okay, I think that was it. So the, this is not the contract. This is, of course, looking for council's approval for the single source, so any questions for Chief Floyd? All right, no questions. It was so clear in the packet and so well explained, so looking for any action perhaps?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I move that Resolution three-one-four-five be approved authorizing the purchase of Motorola Solutions, Inc. portable and car radio systems for the Anacortes Police Department and waiving the competitive bidding requirements due to a single source of supply.
All right. Motion by Mr. Fantini, and I think Mr. Walters on the second to approve Resolution thirty-one forty-five. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. On to item six-B, which is Ordinance four-zero-six-seven. It's an inter-fund loan. Ms. Moulton gave us a little preview, but I will turn it over to Mr. Hoagland to tell us all about this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. So I'll pull up real quick the material that I, that I put in the packet. This is just a simple summary of where that money is coming from and how we're allocating that inter-fund loan. So again, this is, as Ms. Moulton pointed out earlier, this is consistent with the long-term funding plan that we've had in place to help cover the, the costs of the, the fiber build-out. And we're referring to it as bridge funding because it essentially provides a funding that will bridge us from right now through later in the year when the idea is to go into the municipal bond market, do a long-term bond. And the way the market is, has been responding recently, that looks like it's going to be good for us because those municipal bond rates continue to drop. So we're, we're thinking we're going to have a favorable, more favorable rate later in the year. But for the time being now, this would provide the funding necessary to repay the four-and-a-half-million-dollar line of credit owed back to Savvy Bank, and then provide a cash balance that will bring our operating reserves back up to a reasonable level in the January and then moving on into the next fiscal year. So what we're looking at, what I'm proposing is four million dollars out of the Water Fund, and this would be coming out of the Regional Cash Capital Reserve Fund. So currently, that balance is twelve-point-seven million. We would be encumbering four million of that, leaving then about eight-point-seven million for ongoing capital projects. In ERNR, we have just under eight million dollars of unencumbered capital cash. You may remember earlier in the, year last year, we did an inter-fund loan out of ERNR to the General Fund, and that was to purchase Station Three. That's about one-point-eight million. So that one-point-eight million is in place, encumbered in, in ERNR, and that's above the seven-point-nine million that we have identified here. So we're requesting two-point-nine out of that, which would leave about five million in ERNR for those future capital purchases. In the Water Regional Capital Balance, leave about eight-point-seven million. So that would provide a total of six-point-nine million. The interest rate we would use is three-point-nine-seven percent, so that would, that represents the five-year treasury rate. Last week, when I put this ordinance together, the BAR's manual directs that when you do an inter-fund loan, a reasonable rate of return should be used. So the idea is that we're setting this up on a five-year repayment, and the five-year treasury would be an equivalent investment that these funds could be put in, so. We're also putting language in the ordinance itself that would allow the inter-fund loan to be paid off at any time without penalty. The thinking there is, we're, we're setting it on a five-year term to give us maximum flexibility, but the intent is to pay this off at the time we go into the bond market and do that future financing for the, the long-term funding for the Fiber Department. One other thing I am also asking, the council consider waiving the two-reed rule for this? The inter, or, I'm sorry, the line of credit due date is the end of this month, so a couple of weeks away, getting, getting close. It's a big number. Inter-fund loans can be a little bit complicated, but in many ways, this is routine housekeeping as well, so would ask for your consideration for that as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, just a reminder, I know council knows this, maybe for the public, the last phase of construction for our fiber project is currently out for bid. So I think it's somewhere in the five-million-dollar range, and we've got two-point-two-five million federal funds to support that. But as I always use the bad analogy of, it's hard to get a loan when you don't know how much your house or your project's going to cost and how many, how much income you're going to have. So those two things are a big part of this, that I know the Fiber Committee and the Finance Committee has done a lot of good work of figuring it out, and I think this is the best plan. And of course, we'll be talking to council very soon about the, when we, when we get everything kind of locked down on, on the rest of the fiber project. But it's kind of exciting because it's kind of looking like the light at the end of the tunnel for, for getting our financing straight for fiber. And again, the conscious decision of council to, you know, fund this out of the General Fund is, is exciting too. So, sorry, I'll stop talking and let you all ask. Mr. Hoagland, any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Not an actual question, but I wanted to thank Mr. Hoagland and the Finance Department for putting this plan together. And I know, you know, we've worked closely with the Finance Committee and the Fiber Committee on this, this effort. But, you know, thank you very much, and also, as Ms. Moulton mentioned in the Public Works Report, like, it's, it's all about planning, and the fact that, basically, another thank you to Finance and Public Works and, you know, to the city itself for essentially doing that, like, long-term planning to basically have all of our funds have this, like, the ability to essentially use that fund for this kind of loan. Like, they're, they're in such good, solid shape, I guess, that it gives us the flexibility to do this kind of thing, so. that it gives us the flexibility to do this kind of thing. So a big thanks to the departments for that as well.
Any other questions? And if you're willing to entertain the waiver of two-read rule, I can't remember if we have to take that as a separate action or not.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
First, I would ask Mr. Hoagland to restate when he expects we would actually go out for a bond to pay off this loan and put us on a permanent path here.
Yeah, so we'll be working closely with the fiber department throughout the year to nail that down, but the thinking at this point, my thinking is, like, late third quarter, early first quarter, I'm sorry, late third quarter or early fourth quarter this year.
And is there any reason we couldn't go beyond that?
No, none at all. In fact, that's one of the reasons I wanted to use a, a five-year payback that would provide, with the interfund loan tool, you can't really go beyond five years because it's a short-term in nature item, but that would give us the most flexibility if we wanted to wait till the following year, make the first-year repayment of that five-year loan, and then, you know, reassess in the following year.
But in any event, we probably are talking in the next 12, 18, 24 months. Will these two funds that we are borrowing from need that cash in that period?
That's a, that's a great question. So one of the items, the bars manual directs is that the funds, the loaning funds be able to operate without that cash for that period of time, and we have high level of comfort that both the water fund and the ERNR fund will not need to dip that low or that far into their reserves during that, during that timeframe.
Okay. So I would not characterize this as housekeeping like Mr. Hoagland did, but I would characterize it as more or less the plan that we have articulated and discussed at length over the last year or more. So I'm comfortable suspending the rules and would move to suspend the rules for the purpose of skipping the second read on this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, I think, motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to suspend the two-read rule for this particular ordinance. Any additional discussion on that motion? And Mr. Franciac, could you call for a vote, please? Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you for that, and now the ordinance. And just for council's awareness, Ms. Shu has graciously come on from vacation in case there were any specific fiber questions. But any additional questions for the staff? Have to make sure we hold all those customers when we go out for the loan, sorry. All right. Looking for a motion, perhaps?
Mayor Miller?
Uh, Ms. Hubick?
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance 4067, authorizing an interfund loan between the ERNR and water funds and the general fund.
Second.
Hey, a motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve ordinance 4067. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Just one more question because I can't recall it and read it back to you at this point. What period of time will this loan cover fiber expenses for?
So this, the effective date for this would be January of this year, so effective starting the, the current accounting period, January 2024. That's when the start, the clock starts ticking on the 60-month period. I, I, am I, is that what you're asking?
The 60-month period is the period in which we've got to pay this back.
Yes.
But the, the amount of the loan, the 2.9 plus the 4 million, what, what period of time of fiber expenses does that cover?
Okay, right. So the, the four-point, the, we've held the 4.5 million dollar line of credit now for, I think, two years now, and then the two, the other two-point, the other, the balance of the loan then represents roughly the expenditures in fiscal year 2023.
Mayor? Mr. McDougal, I think, might help.
Basically represents, I don't, line of credit was basically the West End build, and the 2.9 roughly is the Gwemas View build. I mean, it's not exact, but kind of roughly that.
Yeah, in rough terms, yeah.
Because I think what you're asking is about the future burn rate, basically, of what fiber is, and we're, like I said, we're kind of waiting on the, the bid to come back for the EDA area to know that number. Is that where you're going, Mr. Walters? Like, how much we expect to spend?
Yes, yeah, in part.
Yeah, I think we can, maybe Ms. Shu, are you going to chime in on this one?
Sure. So we have looked at what our cash needs are through the end of 2024, and with, with the, the funds that we will need, are projecting for the EDA buildout and paying off the, the line of credit, we think that this will get us through 2024 when you take into consideration the, the different grant funding that we have through the EDA and also through the SCADJIT 0.09 funds.
So ideally through 2024, I think, is the answer.
No, Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
I, I, to answer Mr. Walters' point or give a little bit more context, to me, being on the finance committee, I, I under, at least I might be hearing what he's getting at, is right now, we're looking at about a seven million dollar interloan fund, but that doesn't include the final EDA project. So when we go out to bond it, it will be larger than that seven million dollars. Is that what you're getting at? We've got the two and a half grant, and then we are not quite sure what the, if it's going to max out at five million, or it could be even more. So from the finance committee discussions, and it's my first committee meeting, is that, that, the amount we will go out for the, to bond will be closer to, I believe, 10 or 11 million dollars.
Mr. Hoagland, I think, can touch on that.
Yeah, I believe that is the, in round numbers, that's the cash flow that we, that we're projecting for the total bond would be that 11 to 12 million. And the, we did, we did a lot of planning around, around that to allow maximum buildout of the, of the fiber department as well, so that the, the revenue streams, we can maximize revenue streams to be able to support that, that level of debt service.
And, and obviously, that big variable is still out there, the, the EDA bid, that, again, that's why we're plus or minus a million dollars in there.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So if I understand all that correctly, that would drive us to going out for a bond at, at the end of the year or early next year. We wouldn't have any more money left in this interfund loan to support fiber's construction project and operations.
Yeah, sorry. I, I, so I, I'm trying to, trying to ascertain, actually, if, if the question is how, how we are going to fund the continued operations for 2024, the...
I, I understand that with this interfund loan, we will cover fiber operations and the construction project for 2024, but then only '24. And if we go out for a bond at the end of 2024, then we'll have new money to provide for the rest of the construction project in 2025. But that, the corollary there is, then we are tied to going out for a bond at the end of this year. So do I have that right?
Oh, right.
Mayor, Mayor Miller?
No. Uh, Ms. Shu?
Yes, Councilman, Councilmember Walters. As we have been talking about this, we felt that there would be, it would make good financial sense for us to do this interfund loan for, for a number of reasons. One, we will have a better sense of what the, the costs will be for the full buildout of the, the EDA area. We are expecting that the bond market will continue to, to get better, and that during this time, we'll also be able to continue to add additional customers. So we'll have a much better sense through the end of 2024 of what our costs are going to, going to be moving forward for that, that long-term bond. But it will also, we, we felt that it did make sense to do this short-term financing internally for up to five years to, to give us some flexibility, you know, to, to continue to watch the, the bond market and to, to ensure what the, the rate is. There's also some benefit that the, the interest that we are paying for that interfund loan is going directly back to those accounts, so the water fund and to the equipment ERNR fund. So we, we felt that there was a, a lot of benefit from doing this and, and thinking about it as bridge funding, knowing that we will need a, a, a long-term debt financing before the project's complete.
I understand all that, agree with all that. That is consistent with what we've talked about in the fiber and finance committees over the past year. So I, what, what I've just been trying to nail down, though, is, the next follow-on question is, is there additional money in other funds that we can borrow from if we wanted to go beyond the end of 2024 and bond it later? What if the bond market doesn't look great at the end of 2024? Will we be basically committed to going out for a bond at that point regardless because we've run out of additional funds to tap, or will we have additional flexibility still at that point so we could kick the can down the road a little bit further, continue to borrow internally, and then go out for a bond sometime in 2025 or maybe later?
I think Mr. Hoagland's ready to jump on that issue because there was a lot of bond money questions in there.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a fair point. We've, we have encumbered a fair amount of cash internally through our interfund loans. We, depending on the amount, of course, but we do have a number of healthy funds with, within the city's finance, finances that we could look at tapping for additional interfund loans. We also have good working relationships with a number of local banks, and we were actually offered an additional line of credit if that would be something that would be useful to the city. So that, that offer's been made as well. So I think we do have other short-term options out there if we did want to wait a, a period of time for, you know, for the bond market to turn or something of that nature.
I, I certainly understand the, the question, Mr. Walters, and, you know, there, it's just the, the two big variables that are still out there, number of customer, by the time we go for the geo-bond, whether it's, you know, second quarter of this year, third quarter, fourth quarter, the number of customers, the interest rate in the bond market, and what's the other big one? Oh, the EDA bid. And, and I won't, I'm, I'm reluctant to say this because I praised Mr. Hoagland for his accuracy in predicting, predicting our future revenues when it comes to things like sales tax, but, you know, that's another variable out there as we, as we ca, because we continue to cash flow this project with general funds. So there's, there's a lot of variables in there that we're hoping to reduce those with a little bit of time with this bridge loan. Any other questions? Mr. McDougal?
I just did a quick little calculation, and by the end of 2024, basically, through this program, we will have paid, paid down, like, of that nine million dollar loan, like, we will have paid about 1.4, 1.3 or 4 million in principal on it anyway. So that'll help, like, you know, if we do need some additional funds.
Knock, knock on wood. We're in the right, we're in the good trajectory with the fiber, with the fiber project. Okay, I don't think there's been a, there's just been the motion and the vote for waiving the two-read rule. Any additional questions, discussions? Motions? Mayor Miller?
Mayor Miller.
Let's see, was that Mr. McDougal and then Mr. Walters, or is that Mr. Walters on an echo? Mr. Walters?
I move we approve ordinance 4067.
Mayor Miller? We had a, a motion on the table. Ms. Hubick initiated, and Mr. McDougal seconded. So we already... Approve ordinance 4067. Thank you for the correction. Usually remember to write that down, a motion by Ms. Hubick and a second. That wasn't the two-read rule, correct? We already? Correct, yes. This is, so we already had a motion by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. McDougal to approve ordinance 4067. All right, everybody got that? Thank you. Mr. Franciac, do you call for the vote, please? Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, and no further business before the council. I will adjourn the meeting. Have a good night.